All right, good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here, all you employees of the county and our one guest from the public, at least so far. Let's stand and have a word of prayer and a pledge of allegiance after that. Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning and just thank you for almost the completion of another successful budget year in tax setting, and we just ask for your guidance through this hearing. We just thank you for the efforts of our auditor's office and for the commissioners and their role in helping us prepare this. We just thank you, Lord, that you have blessed this county. And in a year when things could have been much bleaker through a pandemic, you've allowed us to have continued strong collections and allowed us to stay within our budget. We end the year with an exceptionally good fund balance, and we are just blessed that you have taken care of our county financially and kept us in strong position. We just turn this meeting over to you as we wrap up this budget season here this month and as we prepare to begin a new budget year on October 1. We thank you for each public official and their departments and the way that they watch the money carefully and ensure that we spend wisely. We just thank you again for all of our county employees, but especially the county taxpayers that support the operations here. We pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The purpose of today's meeting, the primary purpose, is to discuss budget and tax. This is a public hearing time, and of course, anyone may address the court. We'll try to give you some, I'll try to give you a simple of a summary as I can. Here, talking about the budget, we'll discuss the tax rate, and again, comments are certainly welcome and encouraged. And then you can see that there are several other items on here related to the budget, talking about, these are required things that we must do when there are raises for elected officials. We have an item on here to approve the Sheriff's Department's Step Raise Plan. And then we will consider and possibly adopt the budget and the tax rate. So again, we're meeting on an odd day here. We've kept within our calendar for the specific dates that we've had to meet. And if you'll note, we are finishing up this budget year, assuming that we do propose and accept this budget and tax rate. We are wrapping up quite early in the month, thanks to Barbara and her crew pushing us along. We normally are skidding in at the last week and in the last meeting of the year, but we decided to do things a little bit earlier this year. And I'm very grateful to Barbara. And I do want to bring the light to Barbara and her staff and for all the work that goes in to preparation of a budget like this. This is a monumental task, and we've got some sharp staff members down there and a really good county auditor, Barbara. I want to thank you for that. You relieve me of so much work that typically you might expect a county judge to be doing, but I don't hold a candle in my accounting skills. I was pretty good one year back a long time ago, but not nearly the detail and the skill level of Barbara. So Barbara, thank you very much for making this an easy process for us, I consider it to be, and again, giving us all confidence that we've got a really good budget. So thanks to you and to Linda and Annette and Sharon for making all this flow. Thanks to commissioners for your input on this. Let's begin. Item number one, public hearing regarding proposed 2021-22 budget. That will begin October 1 of this year, 2021, and will conclude September 30 of next year. I wanted to just hit some of the highlights as far as sometimes we're asked, why do you have to raise taxes? Why do taxes always tend to go up? Well, the fact is, there are very real increases that occur in county expenditure needs, lot of which we have control over, lot of which we don't have a whole lot of control over. But within this budget, I want to just hit, you know, I've got a couple of pages of items here that Barbara has helped me to tabulate here, just to kind of give you an idea where some of these increases go. What causes increases in county expenditures each year? Let me just start at the top in no particular order. As you'll recall, we made a decision to start setting aside money for accrued leave. When an employee leaves and has employee benefits that are due and owing to them, rather than dealing with that without having that budgeted, we decided to go ahead, let's have a line item in that budget so we're not dipping into contingencies when those typically rare items might happen. $18,000 we've allocated for accrued leave. Our unemployment and workers' comp insurance is gone, is up $19,000. The appraisal district, their budget increased this year. Oftentimes, we get money back. This year, their budget is up. We're asked for an additional contribution to that, which is typical. Each taxing entity contributes toward the operations there at the appraisal district. $24,000 increase there. Our property insurance on all of our buildings and et cetera, all the things that we have to insure against losses, $17,500. This year, we'll have a full year's expenses related to our VA officer. We had about a year there. We did not have a VA officer. And because now of our relationship with Pittsburgh, we've got a full year accounted for there, $8,400, still quite a bit below what that department used to cost us, and so we're glad to have that relationship. $8,400 this year overlapped. In our district court, we've had several things occurring over there, and we've talked about these in various meetings. We've now added another position over there of court coordinator. That adds $51,000 to the budget. Again, the district judges asked for this. They need this. They've got a busy court schedule over there, and they can't expect one person who's wearing the hat of a bailiff and trying to wear the hat of a court coordinator to be able to do it all. We've separated up those jobs, added that position, $51,000. Attorney's fees, when we have indigent defense needs there, up substantially, $61,000. Translator, we've talked about that, that's up $13,000. The district clerk's office added a new position, nearly $33,000. Some additional office equipment there, desk, furniture, et cetera, $5,000. We're having to rent the civic center, hopefully not too much longer, for jury selection, $6,100 there allocated for that. Our district attorney, new David Colley, as you know, we've got more staff in his department now than we have been running for the last few years, and we approved that earlier in the year. $36,000 for that new position. In our own auditor's office, we've got a halftime position there, budgeted at $25,000. The tax office, up $3,800, not huge, not substantial. Data processing, you know, we rely heavily on Net Data and on K-Bro and on the programs that we have to pay annually for licenses, additional equipment, and occasional, this year, we've got, every three years, we have to pay a $20,000 fee to Net Data related to our email, so this is one of those years, so we've got a $20,000 add in there. Off-site backup for all of our critical data to make sure that we don't ever suffer a loss of data or we're not ever held hostage by ransom somewhere, $20,000. Our internet costs to Suddenlink, up $8,200. Net data fees, up $5,000. We've got, we've got $200,000 budgeted for our annex. We've kind of shelved the idea of doing a major demolition and consideration of a new building over there, but we do want to put some money in there to talk about possibly getting the facelift done there at the annex and getting that building looking more current, trying to keep up with the good things that are occurring here on the square. We want to do our part. We've got some of the front of our building literally falling off. Fire protection payments to the city, as you know, went up. We voted and approved a $50,000 increase there. The cost of our annual truck that we give to each of our volunteer departments, trucks are costing more now, we're up to a little over $40,000. That's about a $5,000 increase. We're matching a grant, or at least we're budgeting to match a grant for Five Star, Lots of things going on in the sheriff's office. We're fortunate to have federal prisoners, which help with revenue, but along with that comes additional expenses in the form of meals and medical, you know, medical supplies, medical treatment, et cetera. Toten prisoners back and forth, a new van, $60,000 van. We've got these step increases that go along with payroll expenditures, and that is a program that we initiated, how many years ago, Sheriff, did we do step? Four years ago?
Two or four.
And that was a good thing that we've done. We continue to have challenges there in the sheriff's office, trying to keep up with other agencies, both within our community and our surrounding neighbors, but just finding staff, especially during times like this when we're dealing with government handout money and COVID, and just trying to keep a jail staffed with minimal number of people. That's not a place where you can cut corners, and it's not a place where you can go without staff. And we've had to hire lots of jailers, lots of turnover typically in that position. And our, our objective years ago with the STEP program is to be able to set up a predetermined salary level for lots of different positions within the sheriff's office that are based upon years of service there, and it helps these guys to consider a career in law enforcement to be able to see, what does the future look like for me? And if the county gives raises or if they don't give raises, does that mean I'm going to be stuck in this position at the same pay level forever and ever? And that's not conducive to hiring those critical positions. So step raises will cost about $32,000. Moving on to our emergency manager, Chief McCray, we raised his pay by $3,000. We share him with the city of Mount Pleasant and get an extra good value there, his total compensation about $18,000. Body transports for autopsies that are required, not really an optional item, but the JP's at some time just have to have these autopsies done, and those autopsies are up and hence the transports that go with those. Our law library, as some of you may or may not know, we have to provide a pretty extensive law library for our inmates so that they can research the law as it relates to their cases, and they've got quite a substantial law library accessible to them. And the cost of that service goes up, about $6,300 for this year. Couple of biggies here, raises. This year, we've agreed after it's been a dry spell for many years with our employees, and it's time to at least attempt to try to get back going in the right direction. Raises to the tune of about $265,000. That includes a $1,500 per month increase for employees and a $1,200 raise for elected I still think we're behind in quite a few positions, and we're not able to give the raises that we would like to give, but I do think that it was long overdue that we make a move there. We knew it would cost some additional money, $265,000 there. Retirement benefits, our retirement plan, which we have not made any adjustments to, we have not gone up in any retirement benefits, but just simply making the county contribution to match the employees' contribution. And because of fluctuations in the market and all kinds of other factors that contribute to the amount that is a fixed percentage that we allocate to retirement, $90,000 increase this year. That's about a, what, 1% increase? What was that, or half percent? What was that?
It's about 1.1%.
1%. So some years, we have been fortunate to not see that go up that much. Unfortunately, this was a year when we're seeing it go up a bit more. So those are some of the items that, you know, that's the reality, and these require some additional monies. And so when we talk about your, our ability to stay within our budget, I think we stay within our budget, but there are certain things that are beyond our control if we want to maintain the same level of service and maintain the same level of safety there at the sheriff's office. So that's all I have right now. Commissioners, anybody want to make a comment there first? We'll let Barbara make a, make a comment, and then we'll certainly invite anybody that has a question from our audience.
Brian, I'd like to say that, that another thing that hadn't been mentioned yet is the state mandates that we do not, that they don't fund. I mean, they, a lot of times, they'll come up with a, with something that they tell us we've got to do, but they don't provide the money for us to do it, so.
Did you use the word unfunded mandate?
Unfunded mandates.
Yeah. And I was just informed, I said the wrong thing. Employee raises, not 1,500 per month, 1,500 per year. And same with $1,200 per year, not 1,200 per month for elected officials. Thank you, James. I got ahead of myself. Jimmy, anything else?
No, sir.
Any other commissioners? I won't belabor it, but if you have something to say, please say it. It may be something Barbara says will stimulate comments. Barbara, any comments from you, budget-related, that might help bring clarity to this global discussion?
Well, I just wanted to remind the public that the first way to get Jesus
Is that, is that on?
No.
Okay. And is your wireless still on?
Yes, sir.
Let's, let's fix that. Yeah, I want people to be able to hear that are on our YouTube channel. Is that one working? Yes, that one's working. James will work on the other.
Okay. I just want to remind y'all in the public that we started back in June. We had two all-day workshops, basically. We met with every elected official and gave them the opportunity to determine their needs and to present those to y'all. We followed up then at our, one of our regular commissioners' meeting and had a budget workshop within that to get any additional questions answered. The district judges came in and explained to you what it was that they needed. And I appreciate Judge Lee saying that, you know, we had rushed this up, but really, there's a new Senate Bill 1357 that requires that the audit be posted with the county clerk by August the 15th, and we did that on August the 11th. So our goal was to do it a little earlier, but we were required to do it earlier. In fact, that came after we had first made our first budget calendar. That came out on the very day when we were ready to move forward with that, so we had to, you know, work on that at that time. So my point is that this is not a process that we've done in just a few days. It starts, you know, back with the elected officials determining what they need. And I also want to call your attention to the fact that during the course of the year, as evidenced by the budget amendments that we make, I monitor the budget every month before it comes to you, in fact, before every meeting, and then we make adjustments throughout the year so that we can monitor the budget, prove that we're making the best use of the funds, and have the funds available that might be needed, and move them within a line item so that, as elected officials, those, those people can determine what's best for their department. Any questions?
Good. You mentioned about meeting with all the elected officials. Each year, our elected officials continue to, to do more with less within their departments. Sometimes you have to add staff, sometimes you have to add equipment, sometimes you have to add office supplies or furniture, things come up, but by and large, most of these departments are heavy on labor is the main thing that runs this county, and salaries is the, by far, the biggest component of our, of our budget. And again, I think we've taken a very nominal raise across the board. Just some details here that are important, that is public transparency information. We're going to talk about the tax rate here in just a minute, and despite the fact that the tax rate itself, the numerical number of .4669, is down slightly from the prior year, and last year was down slightly from the year before that, we're going to come back to that with some comments. But this year's property tax revenue will increase by $588,820. Part of that was an increase in the anticipated collection rate. This can make a lot of difference year to year, and it's the job of the tax, of our tax depart, tax office to determine, based on their calculations, what is this first collection percentage going to be? And we are projecting a collection percentage of 97.5%, which is an increase over last year. So of that 588,000, half of it, or $297,000, is attributable just simply due to the fact that we expect to have better collections of all the tax notices and bills that are sent out. We expect to do better in collections. That's about half of that revenue increase. Then, because of new property throughout the county that's added to the tax rolls, not talking about increases in your home or your business that have gone up, just new property that was not previously on the tax roll, of that 588,000, $161,209 is attributable to new property coming on the tax rolls. And of course, when you've got a healthy economy, that's what we want to see happening, and we haven't seen much of this for quite some time. You know, it's been a real struggle keeping up with, with the budget in, in years when we saw the tax rolls going down by hundreds of millions of dollars, literally in one year due to the closing of our, of our power plant and our mining operations. And fortunately, we lived through that, and we still remain strong within the county. Yes, we've had to have some increases over the years, but I'm hoping that now we're in a mode where we're going to see new property being added to the rolls each year, houses, new businesses and such. So again, 588,820, half of that from tax collection increase, and another significant chunk of that from the addition of new property to the tax rolls. So official statement here, this budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of $588,820, which is a 5.64% increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year is $161,209 of that 588. This is your time for any more comments, questions, explanations. You have Barbara here that knows this inside and out, if there's anything else that you would like to express. Because if there's not, I'm going to consider bringing the budget hearing to a close. I'm not going to rush. All right. Item number one, public hearing regarding proposed budget is hereby officially over. We will continue on to item number two, public hearing regarding the proposed 2021 tax rate of 46.69, .4669. So 46.69 cents of tax per $100 valuation. Let me kind of give you what some of the figures we were dealing with. The property tax rate last year, .4679, a slight decrease to .4669. The no new revenue tax rate this year would have been, and well, actually is, .4574, not quite a penny less. We used to call that the effective tax rate. The next line is the voter approval tax rate. This is the amount that you can raise the tax up to before you exceed a point where you've got to have the approval by vote of the taxpayers. That is .4690, slightly above our .4669. Breaking our .4669 down into maintenance and operation of .4120, and the debt service of .0549. The combination of that 4120 and the 0549 gives you your tax rate of .4669. The total debt obligation of Titus County that is secured by property taxes, $105,565,000. Sounds like a lot of debt for a county of our size, 105 million, and it is a lot of debt. But what is this debt? It is all related to our loop, and that figure was considerably higher when that loop was freshly completed and we began this journey of collection of additional taxes matched by a partial reimbursement from the state of Texas because we have a matching program on that, that loop project of 168 million. So we've paid it down to 105 million is what remains. The bulk of each semi-annual note payment is paid by the state of Texas, but the end is in sight. We're about now 10 years, now 14 years away from that, 13 years away from that. We've been able to enjoy some reductions in our original interest rate. We've been able to refinance some of those bonds, and hence, we've been able to benefit by a decreasing debt service rate, primarily due to the environment that we're in with lower interest rates. So that, that has been a positive thing rather than the opposite direction. Commissioners, any comments on the tax rate?
I'd like to say we've always tried to whittle away on that tax rate every year since I've been here, so we've, we've dropped it down from the previous year, three years in a row, to about what it was in 2017. So I'm proud of that. I know we do have a lot of growing pains, and we go through those departments, and Tim's here today, and I'll say, "Tim, what about this? What about that in your department?" He's already trimmed it, so there's a lot of trimming been going on through the years, and we still continue to do that to try to save money as we, as we can, and we're a good team, and we work hard around the county, all the department heads and officials to cut back and check on things, and we've had a lot of great help with the auditing department since they, since Barbara came in here, we've really went through a lot of the different budget items and put things where they're supposed to be and found things that we were paying on and programs and different things we could cut out of the budget, so real proud of that. So we're going to continue to keep on keeping on.
And thank you for that information about the slightly decreasing tax rate that we're trying to achieve each year, and hopefully that trend continues as hopefully new properties are added within this county to help share the, the burden of additional expenses within the county. You know, it used to be, 10 years ago, 11 years ago, we had a power plant and a, and a mine operation here that paid just about 50% of the tax burden in this community, not only at the county level, but within the other, some of the other taxing entities as well. And we no longer have that, that benefit, you know, that, that valuation has, has gone away. It's literally at zero. And that was, that was a lot of, that was a lot of tax value to have to absorb over, over those next five, six, seven, eight. absorb over those next five, six, seven, eight years, and since we made it through that, we've been able to whittle that rate down a little bit. Any other commissioner comments? I may ask Barbara to make a brief comment. Barbara, any summary statement from you?
Yes, sir. I just want to remind you about the fact that the Welch Power Plant is scheduled to close in 2028. I've been in contact with Shirley Dickerson at the appraisal district, and she has been in contact with the officials out there. They are maintaining the same plan as they had with Luminate. They are decreasing that each year so that by the time we get to 2028, we won't take one big hit, and that is included in this budget as well.
Yeah, good point. I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, so it shouldn't hit us unexpectedly. We do have a plan in place to work through that. Now, I think that those men out there or women are trying to find some other use possibly for that plant, but we'll have to wait and see on that. But we do have a plan moving forward so that that won't hit us all at one time.
You know, and a lot of folks had a misunderstanding of the closing of the power plant. That didn't result in a tax base that all of a sudden just fell off. Fortunately for us, it was a steady downturn, and I'm glad that the same thing is going on here. That will, despite all the negatives that come with losing that power plant, the gradual reduction in their appraised value will certainly help smooth things over for us. All right, last call for any comments during public hearing for the tax rate 2021, .4669. All right, I will bring that public hearing to a close. Item number three, consider and possibly approve raises for Titus County elected officials, which is included in the 2021-22 county budget to the tune of $1,200 annually or $100 per
Make that motion.
Motion for the raises for elected officials is made by Commissioner Parker, made by Commissioner Applewhite.
I'll say it.
And a second by Commissioner Parker. Discussion on this, I think we've discussed this at length, and I support this. I think that it is reasonable. All in favor of approving that $1,200 annual raise for elected officials? Say aye.
Aye.
Item number four, consider and possibly approve the sheriff's department STEP raise plan, also the ramifications of which are included in this budget, I think I told you, to the tune of about $32,000.
Make that motion.
Motion is made to approve the STEP raise plan at the sheriff's department, made by Commissioner Parker. We all need to start, do this. We all sound too much alike. That motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. Is there any discussion whatsoever? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, that leaves us with the two main items. The culmination of the budget preparation over the past couple of months was item number five, consider and possibly approve and adopt the 2021-2022 budget. Make a motion. Motion to approve the new budgets made by Commissioner Fitch. Second by Commissioner Parker. Any discussion? All in favor of approval and adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And that brings us to item number six, consider and possibly adopt a tax rate that has been proposed previously, .4669, with a breakdown, maintenance and operation of that .4669, .4120, and the other half, the other portion, .0549 for debt service, total of 4669.
Make that motion.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Applewhite to adopt that tax rate.
Second.
And a second is made by Commissioner Fitch. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our last item, consider and possibly approve additional custodial pay for overlapping training. I think that's self-explanatory, but let me be clear, and this is not something that we typically would budget for, as oftentimes you don't have the need for it. As I'm sure all of you know by now, our wonderful, wonderful head custodian, David Holmes, is going to be moving to Oklahoma. He will head out this Sunday to work with his son-in-law and his business up there. And that leaves us with a major gap, and I was fortunate enough to have, oh, a dozen or so, apply for this position. I made a selection. I believe I have made a good one. We have a young man, very early 30s, by the name of Elijah Faulkner, and the last thing I wanted to do was have him shake hands with David as he's walking out the door, and as Elijah is walking in the door. He needed to be trained, and no one better to train him than David. So I am asking you to approve being able to pay this young man for this week, for this overlapping training period of five days. That will include his payroll, his benefits, his taxes. I don't have that exact figure there, but he is being paid at slightly less than what David was making. He is started at $14, and so with your approval, we'll be able to pay him for the time that David has been able to give him, which is all this week, Monday through Friday.
Make that motion.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. That said, please find time to express your gratitude to David and welcome in our new custodian. This is a young, energetic kid, married with five kids. He lives in Pittsburgh. He's got a wonderful, humble attitude, was what I liked about him, and got very nice recommendations from two previous employers, both of whom he worked for for a good amount of time. What's that? Yeah. And so any other discussion there? All in favor of approving that, say aye. Is there anything else before we adjourn? Just a reminder, you've got a holiday on Monday. Don't anyone show up accidentally. We will have Commissioner's Court one week later, on the 13th. Got a long agenda there. It's been three weeks in between meetings. We have a long agenda. I don't know that there's any bombshells in there, but it will be a long agenda, so. If there's anything else you want or need to add to that agenda, let us know. James is still accumulating agenda items, so that'll be a week from Monday, Labor Day holiday. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Make a motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parchman to adjourn. Who said that? Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone.